Let the record reflect that all trustees are present with trustees Kistner, Robby and online. Trustee Kistner, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, we're ready to begin Program Management Committee meeting when you are.
Oh, I didn't realize that I was going to be up first.
Sorry, sorry about that.
Okay, you can give me a second because I was also doing some other work. I'm getting there. This is the 266th meeting of the Program Management Committee for the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District today, Tuesday, April 29, 2025 at 7:30 a.m. Can you get a roll call?
Go ahead, Josh. Let the record reflect that all trustees are present with trustees Robby and Kistner online.
Good, thank you. We have committee minutes from April 1, 2025 meeting. You got a motion to approve?
Second.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay. No comments by the chair, so we have our engineering department agenda items.
Good morning, trustees. A number of items this morning. First item, I bet you'll see next Thursday, is a CSL volume green infrastructure grant to 6262 Olive Boulevard. This ordinance will authorize the district to enter agreement with Washington University to provide financial assistance through the grant program. The purpose of project is reduce combined sewer overflows in the River DePere per the long-term control plan in consent decree. This project will reduce runoff volume with the installation of one bio-retention basin. The total cost of the project is estimated at $113,400 and Washington University is requesting the full amount for the reimbursement. In your packet, you'll find an exhibit showing the location. Washington University is redoing the parking at this facility in the center there. In the lower right-hand, you'll see the new bio-retention. This is located just south of Olive and just west of Skinker Boulevard. All right, the next one is also a green infrastructure grant to Pagedale Town Center Homes. This ordinance authorizes the district to enter agreement with Pagedale Town Center Homes LLC to provide financial assistance in the green infrastructure grant for the construction of green infrastructure. The purpose of this project is to reduce combined sewer overflows to the River DePere per the long-term control plan. This project will reduce runoff with the installation of amended soils in the rear yards at 12 individual locations. The total cost of project is estimated at $18,000 and the Pagedale Town Center Homes is requesting approximately $18,000 reimbursement for the costs of green infrastructure. Again, there's an exhibit and you'll see a myriad of homes throughout the Pagedale area that are being rehabilitated or rebuilt with new homes in where they're adding the amended soils to the rear yards that'll capture that runoff before it gets to the combined sewer system. All right, we'll move on. This first item is the Clark Avenue Sanitary Relief Project. This action will appropriate funds and this is an unplanned appropriation to an ongoing construction project that is being constructed by Keely Construction Group. The work on the project consists of construction approximately 1,200 feet of 15-inch pipe sewers. Purpose of project is alleviate building backups to provide relief during wet weather sanitary sewer surcharging. This additional supplemental appropriation of $100,000 is needed due to the additional cost encounter of Class A rock and we had additional restoration due to added utility relocations in the project area. So we had to relocate the utility and had to repave the area of the utility relocation and that was beyond our initial appropriation by $100,000. We'll bring our total appropriation to $1,875,000 and we'll fully fund the project for completion. Next item is the Harlem Baden mitigation basins and sewer separation. This action appropriates additional funds. This is a planned appropriation. It's the second year appropriation for an ongoing construction project being constructed by Goshenshaw Construction. The work on this project consists of construction approximately 10,000 feet of 12-inch to 48-inch diameter sewers and a replacement of approximately eight feet of 60-inch in diameter brick combined sewer with new 60-inch reinforced concrete. The purpose of this project is reduce building backups, alleviate wet weather surcharging the overland flow in the combined sewer area of the Harlem watershed. This is a partial funding request. The planned supplemental of $1.7 million is requested that we bring a total appropriation for this project to $5,700,000. Again, this will fully fund the construction of this project. All right, the next item is the Normandy Sanitary Relief. This action also appropriates additional funds to an ongoing construction project being constructed by J.H. Berra. This also is a second year planned appropriation for the project. The work to be done consists of approximately 8,600 linear feet of pipe sewers 12 to 54-inch in diameter. Purpose of this project is to reduce belling backups and overcharged sanitary sewers and we completed and will allow for the elimination of two of our constructed overflows required by the consent decree. Again, a supplemental appropriation of $2,950,000 is requested. This is slightly above the 2.6 that was planned. That's to cover the cost of rock encountered beyond the original quantities that were estimated in the original bid. This one again will bring the total cost of project to $8,925,000 and again, fully fund the construction of this project. Any questions? All right, the next item is the Lower Merrimack Expansion Phase Two. This is a construction management contract. This will appropriate funds and authorize staff to amend our construction management contract with KAI 360 Construction Services for one-year extension to provide construction management service for that ongoing construction project. The planned construction project is a $117 million expansion of the treatment plant and what the services to be provided consists of bidability and constructability during design and the review of shop drawings during construction and oversight during the construction. This contract amendment is for $1.5 million, which is equal to what's in the budget and will bring the total contact value to $7,800,000. On the MWBE side, this contract, the work for this amendment, this next fiscal year, they'll be utilizing approximately 60% minority and women participation. They had an original goal of 61%. For the two years of the contract, this will be the third year of the contract, right now we sit at 57% minority and women participation on that contract. The next item is the L-51 pump station forest main improvement. This too is a design and services during construction contract. It appropriates additional funds and authorize staff to amend the design contract with M3 Engineering Group for the L-51 project. The L-51 forest main project is a lump sum cost for the design of approximately 8,300 feet of 36-inch forest main and some two-inch forest main and appurtenances. The purpose of this project is to construct a replacement forest main parallel to the existing forest main allowed for future abandonment and rehabilitation of the existing forest main, which has exceeded its useful life. The appropriation of $110,000 is just 10,000 over the original budget for engineering during construction. This project was originally planned, the construction, we bid the construction, we received only one bid, so we're going to be rebidding this job, so we need some additional funding there to re-prepare those plans and get them back out to bid. Any questions? I apologize. On MWBE participation, that original goal is 65.72% MWBE participation. With this amendment, we'll be sitting at 73.3% MWBE participation. So good participation on both those projects. The next three items were projects we bid over the past month. First one, infrastructure repair contract fee. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of rehabilitation of approximately 57,000 feet of sanitary sewers six-inch to 42-inch in diameter using the cure-and-place pipe method. The purpose of this project is to reduce inflow and infiltration and rehabilitate older, damaged and deteriorated sanitary sewers throughout the district. Sewers identified for rehabilitation are identified through our C-MON program performed by our operations crews. We received two bids on this project. Low bid was from Insitu Farm Technologies. The bid was below our designer's estimate and our appropriation of $5 million is equal to the planned budget for the project. Insitu Farm is committed to 20.32% MWBE participation, which meets our 10% minority and 10% women goal for the project. The next project is the LeMay ORS GATA PLC and telemetry upgrades. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of removal of the existing Motorola RTUs with the replacement of new PLCs at 36 district ORS facilities and the installation of cellular modems and antennas and appurtenances. The purpose of this project is replace aging instrumentation, communications and controls equipment with modern technology providing for monitoring capabilities and optimize the available use of our infrastructure. And these are the stations we have up and down the River DePere. So we're redoing all the communications for those stations, which will be critical when our next CSL project comes. We received only one bid on this project. It was from Corrigan Company. The bid was significantly lower than our designer's estimate and below our budget. Our appropriation is $2.2 million, which is about 800,000 under our budget and 400,000 under our estimate. Therefore, we're recommending we accept the one bid from a capable company with capable subcontractors. There'll be MWBE participation is almost 70%. So as you can see, there's a large portion of this that's subcontracted to electrical contractors.
I have a question. Is there any explanation for why there was only one bid on this project or any thoughts about why that would be?
It's a specialty bid. It's not uncommon, it's not typical, the work we do when we get jobs like this at our sewer work, our plant work, things like that where we're doing more. This is strictly mostly electrical. We'll see typically, it's not uncommon for us just to get one or two bids on a project like that.
And do we do anything in those kinds of situations to, you know, more act? I mean, I understand that this bid came in under the estimated amount, so that's good and it's affirmed that we know. So I'm not challenging this one necessarily, but just in general, when this happens, do we do anything to try to, you know, solicit additional bids?
We do. I mean, we have pre-bid meetings and in most cases that I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know exactly how many folks picked up plans, but typically we'll see, you know, more people pick up plans and just choose not to bid it. In fact, we had another bid this month that we only received one bid. It unfortunately did not come in. It came in well above our estimate and, you know, we pulled that one back and we're really doing our work and due diligence to find out if there was something that with the plans that scared some of the contractors off. And on this one here, again, I can't tell you how many people we reached out to at our pre-bids, but I can give that part.
Okay, thank you. No, that's okay. Thank you.
Good question, thank you. Next item is the Watkins Spanish Lake Sanitary Relief Project. This action appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of construction approximately 2,300 feet of 27-inch diameter sanitary sewers. The purpose of project is to relieve, reduce building backups to relieve our overcharged sanitary sewer. The district received six bids on this project. The apparent low bidder was not accepted, so we took the second low bid from Understall Contracting. The first bid failed to meet the MWBE requirements, so they were deemed non-responsive. So we're taking the second bid from Understall Contracting. His bid was below our design estimate and our appropriation of $3,870,000, which includes 140,000 of utility relocation, is above our original budget for the project. Understall is committed to 20.13% MWBE participation, which meets our 10% minority and our 10% women goal. All right, and our last item on the agenda, you were notified by Brett regarding an emergency repair at Cass and 18th Street. We were notified of this a week ago Friday and so this action will complete the contract obligations, appropriates funds and authorized to enter emergency construction contract. This emergency contract is replace approximately 35 feet of 30-inch by 42-inch combined sewers destroyed due to the road collapse and the recent rain events during that time. Approximately 35 feet, two concrete collars in the street restoration, immediate area the sewer will be required. The completion of work, emergency repair was recommended. It was a large cave-in. The sewer was over 20 feet deep, which required special showing and larger equipment, which is beyond the capabilities of our operations crew. So we recommended to Brett that it be emergency and our contractor was able to move in on that following Monday. The, and I'm happy to report the actual hole is filled, it actually paved already. So that's been complete. We are replacing a manhole upstream that is in disrepair that's not right near the break and that will allow us then to line this, the sewers in those areas with a larger manhole. There's also some repairs we're making to the downstream manhole. So once that complete, then we're going to utilize an existing contract that we have for lining to get that sewer lined, so it would prevent any further unraveling in the sewer. So in your packet, there's a picture that shows the sewers right in the middle. That shows you the large cave-in. To the left is just a map showing where that cave-in was on 18th and Cass and then to the right, you'll show the large showing and equipment that is being utilized for this work. And if you watch the news, there was more than one of these that same weekend. There was one on 14th Street that was investigated over that weekend as well. Our operations crew, our operation construction crews went out and found this was of lesser depth without the, near the amount of restoration. And I'm also happy to report that this repair is complete. Approximately, it was about 20 feet of pretty much the same size sewer, but it was only 14 feet deep. So we had the equipment and we're able to make that repair. This hole is filled, backfilled and we'll just be doing restoration. Obviously, with the weather this week might make that a little more difficult, but for as much news as we got to have those done and complete within a little over a week, I think is a great test on both our operations and our construction management folks. And that.
Rich?
And your contractors, Rich?
Yes.
Hey, Rich?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Can you, can you pin as to what the ultimate cause was for these? Can you, can you pin as to what the ultimate cause was for these? I mean, in the past, I know we've had water system leaks that have affected the integrity, structural integrity of our sewers. And is that likely the case here, or what happened?
To my knowledge, it's unknown at this time. Obviously, with as large as that was and as big as it got in a hurry, there probably was a large void there for some period of time. It's kind of one of those things that we have in a lot of cases found leaking water lines or there's been a water line. We didn't have a water line in the actual hole this time. There was one adjacent, I think, running down the side. But yeah, it becomes, pardon the pun, but a chicken and the egg, whether the water line caused the cave-in or the cave-in caused the water line to have an issue. So I guess it's been our practice to fix and see what's, try to determine exactly what happened later. And to my.
No, I appreciate that. I think that's where we are, is are we determining what happened? And my question's really about, is really trying to figure out a longer-term solution to these. And I know you guys are obviously thinking about this every day, but it just, if it seems, I know there was a, there was a water leak on, that I told Brett about a couple months back up on Compton. And, you know, I mean, I know that if something isn't done, that sewer, there's going to be a void there. I gotta believe, and that just happens to be a couple blocks from my house, that's why I noticed it. But I imagine that this is going to be, if we don't, if we're not paying attention to this, we're going to have these emergencies, and they're obviously expensive, but, you know, thankfully nobody got hurt, you know, as a, you know, a drug hit or something fell in the hole. So I'm just trying to figure out, is there a way as, perhaps be more prophylactic about this?
We're, we've got a very robust inspection program and rehabilitation program. In fact, I took one of those contracts today. So obviously, we try to inspect our sewers. The larger sewers take a little larger effort. We do contractual inspection of those. Rely on just what you said, where people call or see a dip or see something that gets our attention to where we can get a crew out there and take a look at it. And then we have, we've always had at least two to three active contracts. And obviously, it's a lot cheaper for us to get in, try to rehabilitate that prior to a collapse like this. But that's kind of programmed. Additionally, you know, we're, we've done a lot of lining having to do with the consent decree for inflow and infiltration, and we're kind of pivoting now into the combined sewer area, not just with our combined sewer projects required by the consent decree, but larger rehabilitation efforts and inspections in those areas. Unfortunately, keeping in mind, when the larger the sewer, the costly it is for rehabilitation, but it's, again, it's a public health issue as well, or a public safety issue as well that you're speaking of. Obviously, we're fortunate here that there wasn't a car or a bus or anything else in that hole.
Thank you.
Trustee Kisser, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other business? Apparently not. Our next tentative meeting date is June 3, 2025, and that concludes the program management committee meeting.
Trustee Evans, we'll get the finance committee set up and ready to go.
Finance Committee, get a roll call, please.
Yes, we will note trustee Wilson, Nicholas, and Evans and Watson are here in person, and trustees Wabi and Kister are online.
Get a motion to approve the minutes of the April 1 meeting.
Second.
Okay, the next item is the preliminary fiscal year '26 budget presentation.
Good morning, trustees. Just have a brief presentation for you today to discuss changes that we made from the preliminary budget that you saw earlier this month. If we could go to slide two, please. So this slide depicts that our revenue requirements and our district expense requirements actually decreased by about $38 million from the time of the discussion of the preliminary budget. Next slide, please. And so I'll kind of go into a couple of details regarding what that decrease consisted of. So if you look at the chart at the, the chart that's depicted at the top there, you'll see total revenue requirements. And the changes primarily to the revenue requirements were within the fund balance category. That amount dropped by $37.7 million with respect to the expense changes. We had a decrease in our operating budget of about $100,000. Debt service budget decreased by $5.9 million, and our capital program decreased by $31.7 million. And I'll give you some additional details regarding that change in the capital program in a moment. But with respect to the change in the debt service number, that's primarily due to the SRF loans that we have on our books. We don't actually pay interest on those loans until we draw those funds. And so we made some changes to the capital program, which in turn impacted when we anticipated making those draws, and it reduced some of the interest expenses. We also coordinated with Tim and his team to take a look at the overall profile of the SRF program, and we're able to reduce that anticipated number by about $5.9 million. And that number that I'm referring to is the interest amount that we anticipated being. Next slide, please. Our next one, please. Okay, so I'm just going to briefly cover some changes that we made to the capital program. You'll see a line there under type of project, the first, or actually second bold line, which reads new projects appropriations total. We reduced the number of new projects, I'm sorry, we increased the number of new projects that we anticipated that were going to occur in FY '26. That actually, though, resulted in a decrease in our overall anticipated cost of about $2.7 million. The majority of the change to the capital program pertained to continued projects that we would initially budgeted for FY '26. We had about five projects in total that we thought we would have to do in FY '26, but we were able to actually get those completed or anticipate asking for appropriations in the current fiscal year. That change resulted in a decrease in the funds that were needed from $48.7 million, which was in preliminary budget, to $19.7 million. So we had a decrease in that category of about $29 million. So again, in total, we had a decrease of two projects, but however, the budget amount, because of the impact of those continued projects that we were able to do in this fiscal year, decreased by $31.7 million. Are there any questions that I can answer so far?
Yeah, Marion, can you revisit the revenue side? Why? What? So my, my, did our revenue projections go down by $30 million?
Well, what went down was the use of the fund balance. We used fund balance to pay for the capital programs, and so.
What's the long-term effect of, what's our, what our fund balance should maintain? We should be maintaining, you know, debt service coverage ratio in our fund balance? Or there should be ratios that establish what our fund balances need to be long-term over the year? I'm assuming that this is within those tolerations, those tolerable levels?
It is, but the debt service coverage is really not predicated on fund balance, though. What fund balance represents is those bonds that we have either issued, and we have on our books to be able to spend those, or we have SRF funds that have been approved for our use as well. The way that works is that, so you set aside those revenue bonds that we anticipate spending, that's in that fund balance total. The debt service coverage is typically, or not typically, but the way that's calculated is you look at what your principal and interest payments are going to be during that fiscal year, and we look at what our net revenues are. So all the revenues we get from wastewater revenues that are coming in from, well, not stormwater, wastewater revenues that we get, less operating expenses, that gives you a number that's available to pay towards your debt. And so you just simply take that net revenue amount, divide it by your anticipated debt, and that gives you your anticipated coverage level. So the two are a little different. They do kind of interact, but the fund balance.
Yeah, I think that's more of an income statement, and the fund balance is more of a balance sheet.
That's correct.
So, but we, I'm just trying to, I don't understand, why the fund balance is gone down? So we're using, we're using money this year that originally you planned on using in fiscal year '26. Is that correct?
Correct. The fund balance actually, this is kind of weird here, but if you look at that, the fund balance is actually increasing because we're using less of it in FY '26. So we anticipate that that fund balance would go up.
Okay. All right, that's right. I understand that.
Okay. Thank you for the question. Okay, last slide, please. Okay, so in terms of our upcoming items that we would need to complete with respect to the budget, the budget will be introduced during the May 8 meeting. We have a public hearing that will take place at 6 o'clock that evening, and that primarily relates to our taxes that we would need to assess to fund our stormwater program, but we'll also cover some budget items as well. And then if approved by the trustees, we would take the budget to your June meeting and request that it be adopted. Are there any additional questions that I can answer? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the next item, which is mine, which relates to our budget ordinance. Okay, so our budget ordinance, as I just mentioned, will be introduced during the May 8 board meeting. It authorizes the district to expand funds during FY '26 for wastewater and stormwater operations. The requested appropriations total $549.2 million, and they're listed at the bottom of the detail sheet that's in your package there. They match the operating budget and the debt service amounts that I just covered, which are on slide two of the presentation that I just talked about. As always, with respect to our capital program, we bring those projects to you throughout the year, and so those funds are appropriated when those projects are brought to you for Any questions about the budget ordinance? Okay, hearing none, I will move on to the next item, which relates to our tax ordinance. So our tax ordinance will be requested also for introduction during the May board meeting. It does comply with the district's charter and is part of our annual budgeting process. The trustees will be requested to approve the tax rates as reflected in the table that's attached to the detail sheet, which are needed to fund the district's stormwater program. A finding of facts committee consisting of trustees Wilson, Wabi, and trustee Nicholas will be requested after the conclusion of the public hearing on May 8 to recommend the amount of taxes to be levied by the district in 2025. The recommendation reached by the committee will be provided to the full board on June 12. I just want to take a minute to briefly talk to you about the different taxes that we have. So the district has a task, a tax that we refer to as the 10-cent tax. That tax is used to fund the operations and maintenance activities relating to the stormwater program. We also have a tax that we refer to as the 2-cent tax, which funds certain regulatory obligations that the district must comply with to meet stormwater quality requirements outlined by the Missouri Department of Natural Revenues. We have a new 7.4 cent tax that will be applied to residential property assessments to address flooding and erosion control. In total, those taxes are expected to generate $57.2 million over the course of the next fiscal year. You will also see in the tax ordinance, there are currently three OMCI sub-districts that we left those taxes on. Those are levied for operations, maintenance, and capital improvements in specific areas of the district's service area. Those OMCI taxes are expected to generate approximately $1.5 million in revenue for those three sub-districts. Our final tax rates will be presented in September. The rates that we're presenting now are preliminary rates. We receive additional information from the assessors' offices throughout the summer. And as usual, we come back to the board in September and during a special board meeting, after the status reviewed, our calculations, we will ask the board to approve the final tax rates. And normally, there are small adjustments between what we approve in June and what the final rates are in September. Are there any questions that I can address relative to your tax ordinance? Okay, hearing none, Stephanie, if you can move to the next item, please. Okay, so this next item relates to a request to close a stormwater revenue fund, 3307. This particular revenue fund was in place prior to the district implementing its 10-cent tax back in 2018. The current balance of the fund is zero. We typically don't get a lot of revenue flowing through this fund. It's normally a couple hundred dollars now because it relates to some old charges that we assessed for stormwater. I think it was like 24 cent for multi-residential accounts or multi-residential properties, and 18 cent that we were billing for residential properties back. properties, and eighteen cent that we were billing, uh, for residential properties back, uh, ten years ago. And the only thing that flows through that fund now is if we have delinquent accounts that are paid off, then those, uh, amounts flow through that fund. But again, it's a few hundred dollars a year. So what we would like to do is simply close that fund, and any additional revenues that we were, was received would go into our ten cent, um, property tax fund. So are there, um, any questions regarding, uh, this particular request? Okay, hearing none, and I will go to the last item that I have, uh, which is the Adjustment Review Committee report. Uh, this report is required, uh, by our wastewater ordinance. Anytime, uh, there's an adjustment that's over five thousand dollars, I present that to, uh, the board. So, um, in terms of the grand total, uh, during the quarter, um, January first through the end of March of twenty-twenty-five, uh, there were a total forty-nine, uh, transactions which resulted, uh, in credit adjustments of, uh, three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars roughly. Um, in the top section of the report, uh, you will see that there were thirty-seven total adjustments, uh, which resulted in credits of three hundred and thirteen thousand. The largest of those are, um, reduction factor adjustments. Again, those are, uh, studies in which, uh, we go out and look at, uh, properties to determine how much of that water is actually entering our, um, wastewater system, and these are primarily commercial accounts. Um, to give you an ideal, um, you'll see that there are nine reduction factor adjustments totaling a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars roughly. Um, we had one adjustment which related to, uh, the city of Chesterfield. They had a park, uh, and we did a study. That particular adjustment alone was ninety-seven thousand dollars of that hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar amount. We had water off adjustments, uh, sixteen of those, which totaled a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, moving down to the next section, there were twelve write-offs relating to properties acquired, uh, by the LRA. Um, we, um, had a total adjustment of twelve transactions with, uh, a credit issued of eighty-one thousand dollars. The bottom of the page, uh, you'll see another category, those are actual billings. Uh, we had, uh, a total of five billings, three to, uh, the Virgin Landfield, two for, uh, the Missouri American Water Company, which totaled, uh, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars approximately. Are there any questions regarding the Adjustment Review Report that I can address? Hearing none, that concludes the items that I have, so I believe that Josh, uh, has the next item.
No, I got, I got the-
Oh, I'm sorry, Todd has the audit item.
Yeah. Morning, everybody. Uh, I'm making a guest appearance here at finance. So you should have a detailed sheet for internal audit services. Uh, so this is a resolution to renew a contract with Omertino for internal audit services. It's item forty-five, our next week's agenda at this point. Uh, this action exercises a third option year and provides a fourth overall year of the contract. Uh, the contract is a notch exceed of a three hundred and thirty-two thousand and five hundred dollars. The original RFP was, uh, performed in two thousand and twenty-two. We'll do another one in twenty-seven. Basically, you could use this every five years, just like the external audit contract. Uh, so Omertino, you know, they do really good work. We really work well together, which is really important. Uh, we especially, especially leverage some of their IT and construction knowledge. Thurman Brooks is our minor, minor audit sub. He's a sole proprietor, uh, and he also does really good work. He did a lot of work on the treasury audit, which you, we're going to present to you guys at the next audit committee meeting next month. Any questions? That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Todd. Uh, moving on to the operating fund portfolio, uh, we're going to start in the top-left, uh, section of the page, uh, summary statistics. And, uh, compared to last month, uh, total par for April was six hundred and sixty-nine million, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars, uh, which is a little bit lower than last month's par, which is six seventy-four, four ninety-five. Um, changes are going to be, uh, expected with amounts, uh, of this magnitude. So we're, we're okay. I mean, there's no need for alarm with the decrease in the par, uh, of that small amount. In terms of the yield, uh, the, the return on the portfolio, uh, we saw a four percent return for the month of April. Uh, the benchmark for, uh, the month of April was three point eight seven. So they're not too far apart from one another. They're never going to be right on, uh, given the high rate of return or the high volume that we have on our portfolio, uh, we're, we're always going to be a little bit higher than the benchmark. The benchmark for March, uh, for the portfolio, um, the yield was three point nine seven, which is a little bit lower than what it is for this month. Uh, again, no need for concern, there'll always be fluctuations. Uh, the benchmark for March, uh, for this portfolio was actually over four, four point on four percent. Uh, and again, that's not a, a great variation, uh, but I guess it's really to be expected with the portfolio of this magnitude. Weighted average maturity for the month of April, uh, was just under, uh, one year at point nine nine. Uh, the benchmark for a portfolio of this magnitude is a little bit higher at one point eight six. And given that we have so much, uh, turnover, uh, daily trades, there's always going to be a little bit of variation between, uh, the actual and the benchmark for a portfolio of our magnitude. Uh, the benchmark for March, um, was one point eight five, uh, which is similar to what it is for April. Uh, weighted average maturity last month was one point oh four, which is a little bit higher than what we came in at for April. Uh, moving on to the right side, uh, top-right side, sector allocation. And again, the sector allocation really just tests how compliant we are with, uh, the district's investment policy, in which we are. Uh, the U.S. Treasury bond notes for April, uh, came in at seventy-one point five percent, which is well within the policy limit of one hundred. Uh, it's very close to last month at seventy-one point two, so not much change there. Federal Agency Bond Notes for April came in at twelve point one percent, uh, which is a little bit lower than last month at twelve point eight. But then again, we're just making sure that we're within the policy limit for the investment policy at sixty percent. So we know where, we know that we're in good shape there. Commercial paper for the month of April came in at sixteen point four percent of the portfolio, uh, which is really close to last month's at sixteen percent even. Uh, not much variation there. Uh, the policy limit, uh, is twenty-five percent, so we know that we're in good shape and we're not in violation of the district's investment policy. Uh, moving on to the bottom-left section of the page, uh, the fund summary. Uh, usually, not, there's not much change here or variation, uh, for the month of April. Um, we saw the construction natural fund at sixteen point six million dollars, which is what it was last month. Uh, debt reserve funds really rarely change, so we're at nine point one percent, I'm sorry, nine point one million dollars, uh, for debt service reserve, uh, compared to nine point three for the month of March. And the largest, uh, section of the portfolio is, uh, MSD Operations, uh, for the month of April. We were closed at six forty-three point nine million, um, which is a little bit less than last month at six forty-eight point six. But given the, uh, large number of construction projects, there's going to be some variation. So again, it's not a drastic drop, so we know that we're, we're largely in the ballpark, so to speak. In terms of the weighted average maturity, uh, for the fund summary, not too much difference from last month. Uh, we closed at, uh, forty-two, point four-two, uh, in terms of the average maturity days. Last month, we closed at point four-one. Uh, debt service reserve, uh, a minimal amount, point oh two compared to point oh nine, uh, the month before. And MSD Operations, we finished at one point oh one a full year. The month prior, we were at one point oh six. So again, not a lot of variation, so there's really not, uh, there's no need for concern, and we know that we're operating, uh, in an efficient manner. And, uh, finally, moving on to the maturity distribution, which is at the bottom-right section of the, uh, portfolio. Looking at, uh, zero to one-year maturities, um, the district was at, was at sixty-six point two percent. The benchmark is seven point three percent. So we're always going to be quite a bit higher than the benchmark, given that we, uh, have a lot of, uh, frequency and, and a lot of occurrence is on a daily basis in terms of daily trades. Last month's, uh, zero to one-year category, uh, was quite a bit less at fifty-six percent, but we know that we have, uh, debt service payments coming up, so that can influence, uh, I guess, a, a, a single-digit or double-digit increase or decrease from month to month. For the one to two-year maturities, uh, for the month of April, uh, we closed at fifteen point two percent. Uh, even though the benchmark's at fifty-eight point nine, we know to expect that type of variance, uh, given that we have so much activity going on a daily basis. Last month's, uh, last month's, uh, portfolio was at twenty-five point five. This month, we're at fifteen point two. So again, um, we know we're going to have a variation, given that we have the debt service payments coming up. And that's it. Uh, any questions on any of that? Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, next tenant meeting date is June third. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, trustee.
Good morning. Welcome to the Stakeholder Relations Committee meeting. Roll call by the chair.
Let the record reflect, uh, that all trustees are present, with trustees Kissner and Wabi online.
Thank you. There are no comments by the chair. Approval of committee meeting minutes, April first, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Thank you. Now, we have a discussion by Jenny Kinstra regarding an ordinance for diversity compliance management application.
Good morning, trustees. I am presenting agenda item number forty-two for ordinance number one-six-five-nine-eight. The project is for, uh, to develop a new application for the diversity compliance, uh, management, uh, reporting. This is necessary because the current, um, application that we use is being, um, sunset by the current vendor. What we're asking for is to enter into a contract with Ometec Solutions for the development, implementation, and hypercare, um, application support services. The project went out to bid, there were four bidders. Low bid was two twenty-eight four hundred, the high bid was two million, three fifty-nine four hundred. Ometec, uh, was selected as the vendor. This will be, um, expensed in fiscal year twenty-five. The project is due to kick off in May, uh, through FY twenty-six. It's a ten-month project. One point four hundred thirty thousand and twelve is to be paid to the Ometec, uh, vendor, and four hundred and five thousand is for temp services for the IT staff to support that project. You may remember, uh, in the year prior, there was a prior board action, it was ordinance number one-six-three-four-three. We had selected last year an off-the-shelf product, um, that other, uh, companies use for diversity, uh, reporting. As we were in the requirements, um, gathering phase, it was determined that it did not meet our requirements, and it was best for us to exit that project and to look at a custom application. The application we currently use was custom-created nine years ago. That's the, the application that is now being sunset by the vendor, and we're pursuing this action to develop a new custom application that will meet the district's needs. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a presentation by MSD staff regarding the April second through the sixth rainstorms.
Good morning, trustees. My name's Jay Hoskins. I'll be giving the presentation on the April second through the sixth rainstorm and its impact on MSD and our customers. Could go to the next slide, please. This first slide shows the total rainfall that fell on the district, April second through the sixth. The warmer colors represent more rainfall, the cooler colors at the bottom, those are the lower rainfall amounts. Um, in general, the northern half of the district received the highest rainfall depths, uh, three to four inches typically across the, uh, northern half of the district. The southern half of the district fared better, two to three inches. So, um, in, in general, the northern part of the district, North County, uh, received more rainfall than South County. Next slide, please. When we look at that total rainfall, and then we, uh, analyze that with our rain gauge network, looking at intensity duration of that rainfall, and then, uh, do a statistical analysis of that, of that data, um, we come up with this, uh, this map that you see in front of us. And, um, the darker colors represent heavier, more intense rainfall, the lighter colors represent the lower intensity rainfall. Again, not too surprising, North County got the most rainfall, and unfortunately, they also got the most intense rainfall as well. Also, something about, that was different about our April second through the sixth rainfall is that, uh, it was something, so what we refer to as a synoptic storm, which is, uh, a fancy way of saying it was a, a longer-duration, heavy soaking rainfall. Um, and, uh, that is something that we've seen, uh, as you might recall back, looking at our November, uh, twenty-twenty-four rainfall event, was something like this as well, this heavy soaking rainfall across, uh, a portion of the district that's already seen that type of event before. Our statistical estimates are that we received, uh, had at least a five-year event across the district, across the northern half of the district, and in many places exceeded a, a ten-year event. So, next slide, please. When we take that rainfall intensity map, and then we overlay that with our customer calls that, that we've received, uh, not too surprising is that, um, what we're seeing is that the highest, uh, frequency in, of, of calls came from, uh, northern St. Louis County and City. Um, the red dots represent our calls that we receive for wastewater, and blue dots represent those that we receive for the stormwater system. And especially, what I want to point out is, if you listen in, in kind of the central point, portion of North County, you see that dark line, that's the cold water, um, sewer shed, and that particular area, uh, was hit especially hard, both the south, uh, part of the system and the north part of the cold water system. About seventy percent of all of our water backup calls were in the cold water creek sewer shed. Next slide, please. Total service requests, um, that our operations department received for the period totaled about twelve hundred and fifty calls. Water backups were about eighty percent of those, about, or about a thousand, uh, overcharge mains about half of those. So, of about half of the water backups calls that we received, uh, we determined that, um, the sewer system, um, backed up and was responsible for the, the, the reason for the call. Uh, comparing that to the November twenty-four storm, just for some perspective, um, we got about twelve hundred water backup calls, total backup calls, in November twenty-four, uh, from the November twenty-four event, and also, um, the overcharge mains, we had about six hundred and seventy-five. So, uh, you know, a, a small- So, you know, a smaller event. The November twenty-four event was a twenty- or fifty-year storm event. Statistically speaking, at least, more calls in November, but still, the April event was significant by its own right, and a very significant number of calls. Next slide, please. So when that happens, the engineering department does a top-to-bottom look at what's going on in the sewer shed, in the sewer system, in our treatment plants. It's a combination of a data review, as well as field investigation inspections of our system. You know, some of the data that we're looking at right now includes rainfall intensity and duration data, stream flow data, how high did the rivers get, how far did the creek get, groundwater levels, how much flow do we have coming into our treatment plants, and how did that affect the system? The sewer levels, how high did the water level get in the sewer system? How quickly was the water running through the sewer system? In Cold Water Creek in particular, we have two large storage tanks. We want to make sure that we know what the water levels in those tanks were and how quickly they were discharging. And then, at the end of the day, we'll take all of that data and look at our models, make sure that our models accurately reflect the data that we have, and then if there's any recalibration that needs to occur, then we do that. From a physical inspection standpoint, one of the things that we're doing is we're walking Cold Water Creek and some of these major tributary sewers, looking for something that might be responsible for these large flows. If there's something going on in the system that we need to correct, we want to know that, and we want to correct that before the next storm comes. So, that's the end of my presentation. I'll open up for any questions you have.
Is there anything significant that's come out of our discussions with them this week?
No, not yet, but we do plan on meeting with Florissant and just reviewing everything with them, so we haven't had that meeting yet.
Okay, thank you. Now, we have a presentation by Jenny Kinstra and Jason Stockman about information technology, annual information security overview.
Good morning again, trustees. Yes, providing a cybersecurity status update for you. I will be covering the first two items for operational technology and generative AI, and then Jason will be covering the business technology security update. I do have Chris Wizerowski here today. I'd like to introduce you to him. He's our infrastructure architect for operational technology. He's now a member of the information technology department. He's responsible for the availability and the security of operational technology. When you think, we call it OT, OT, think about what's in the plants, the instrumentation and the devices, and all of the technology that are in the pump stations, responsible for the availability and security to monitor the systems we monitor, to ensure that they're running properly, and then alarms are responded to proactively before those devices may fail or not be functioning properly. I have Jason with me. He's the Assistant Director of Technology, and he is responsible for the availability and the security of the business technology network. He's done a great deal in the last four or five years to mature our program. I'll kick off with operational technology. Little bit of history, in FY twenty-four, we hired a cybersecurity resource that was dedicated to operational technology. Because of the threats, and you hear this in the news, to utilities, gas, electric, water, we recognized that we needed to mature our program in that area. So we hired that dedicated resource. They report into our information technology team so that we can leverage that resource and the entirety of that team. We also made an organizational change where we moved Chris from operations into the information technology department, because we had synergies there. We identified that we could leverage network resources, security resources, in a cost-effective way, and put more focus on the security of operational technology. In FY twenty-five, accomplishments that we've made, the cybersecurity policy for operational technology was implemented. That had been an open audit item. That's a significant step in our maturing of the security program for OT. Also, in this fiscal year, in fact, in this month, intrusion detection software has been implemented. It's currently in a proof of concept, meaning we put it in one area to determine if it will function and be in compliance with operations. This is a significant step, too. That software actually looks at the communication between these physical devices and makes a determination of what is normal traffic patterns. If it sees something abnormal, that system can then detect that and alarm and alert us that says something is out of the ordinary, and we need to look at that. So that's the kind of the gist of that information, our intrusion detection software. We also have under development a disaster recovery plan. That was in the strategic business operating plan for FY twenty-five. That'll be published in May. We have it in draft, but it's ready to be published. Looking forward, in FY twenty-six, we are going to do another organizational change where the operational technology specialist that actually do the programming and encoding of those operational monitoring systems, they're going to also report into information technology. That's another change that seemed to make sense, to align the resources with Chris's team, so that they're all in one organizational area. We do expect to utilize our network server and architect staff to support the pump station and network upgrades. That is another strategic business operating plan initiative. We are going to look at OT and IT physical security threats. That is something that is emerging, where, and you've seen this in the news, where people want to find a utility in electric and water and do something at, I guess, a physical action that could cause harm or cause havoc in a particular area. We will be conducting a disaster recovery exercise for both IT and OT. That's important, because those exercises then determine whether or not your plan is any good and whether you'll be prepared for disaster. We'll also be supporting the operational technology monitoring controls required for the fluidized bed incinerator project. That's another strategic business operating plan. And then, develop the strategic roadmap for plant DCS standardization. There are some opportunities there where we can operate more efficiently if we standardize the devices and the management of those instruments. That concludes my portion. Oh, no, it doesn't. Do you have any questions from the operational technology side? Okay. The next up, I wanted to talk about generative AI strategy and governance. This might seem odd from a security perspective, but because of it, because it's an emerging technology, we have additional threats, because the hackers, the criminals are getting more proficient. From a phishing exercise, emails that come in, you used to be able to look at those and say, oh, it's spelled wrong, it's grammatically incorrect. Well, generative AI makes them look better, and now it's more easy to get people to fall for them. So that's why this is part of our security update. In FY twenty-four, we put a policy in place outlining acceptable use. We were pretty strict. We wanted to make sure that the district was protected from any unknown issues, threats that might happen from use of that technology. It's new, there's no legislation that necessarily protects organizations from something that could go wrong with the technology. We also put in a training program for our technology staff. We thought that was necessary so that they were informed of the technology, what it could do, but not to push the technology on the organization, more so that if you see a business problem, how can generative AI and AI help solve a business problem? We've done that in FY twenty-four. In FY twenty-five, we did implement a generative AI voice bot for customer care. That helps route calls more effectively so that the customers, when they call in, say, I need billing, I need HR, or I have a problem with X. And we intend to further develop that bot to make it more efficient, and in fact, so that our customers and ratepayers can go online and report issues versus everybody has to call us now to report an issue. There was an approved implementation of predictive analytics. This was by engineering, which is an AI-driven application. It prioritizes maintenance based upon the CCTV scans. And then finally, we do generative AI logging and the directors review who's using the gen AI technology, to make sure that we're very aware of how much use there is and whether or not it's in compliance with our policy. Looking forward, we intend to, in FY twenty-six, to engage a cross-functional team of people from across the district, so that just the same way we did in information technology, make sure that people understand what it could do, so that when a business problem arises, we can look at it for a solution. So we intend to expand the knowledge of gen AI and AI amongst the organization. Finally, we're monitoring emerging technology trends, really looking at security risk. We've made some decisions about some Microsoft products that we won't allow to be enabled on our systems because there is no protection. These products can, they learn from what they do, and they can actually take your organizational information and put it into their libraries, and then we don't have any way to protect what happens to that information. So we've taken a strong stand on that, but we'll continue to do that, and we'll balance the benefit of the technology with the risk that it might pose for us. That does include my portion. Any questions? Thank you. I'll hand it over to Jason.
Good morning, trustees. This is a similar presentation to what we did last year with some updated numbers and some additional information in it. One of the tools that we use to kind of gauge how well we're doing, both on the public side as well as on the internal side, is BitSite. And this comes in handy for a number of reasons. They give us information as to what they found, and they help us to close any potential risks or gaps that we might have. But it also helps us with our cyber insurance program. The higher our score, the more diligent we are, the better rates we're going to get on cyber insurance. So we look at this pretty regularly, and they scan our systems about every sixty days in different areas. And the rating is made up primarily of what they call diligence, which is our outside public face, but it does look at a small portion of user behavior, as well as if there have been any reported or known compromised systems. So as you can see, our scores are pretty good over there. We did have one that brought us down a little bit. We've since then addressed it. The only reason it still looks like it's down is because they only scan every sixty days, like I said, so it takes a while for that to fall back off and come back in. So if you could go to the, any questions on this slide? Sorry. Yeah, so this next slide, our rating right now is at seven forty, which is a good range. It's in the advanced range. Our highest this year so far was seven seventy, and that was just about a month ago. Then, we had some scans come in. It identified those potential risks, and we, like I said, since then, addressed that. So overall, we tend to range anywhere between the seven hundred and twenty and seven ten up to seven seventy or seven eighty. I think our highest score to date was seven hundred and seventy, so we do pretty good with that. Any questions? Okay, next slide. So I kind of wanted to highlight some of the improvements that we've done. I think last year, I kind of explained, you know, the cybersecurity framework that we follow is NIST, and they have five different categories, the identify, the detect, respond, protect, and recover. And there's multiple areas within each one of them that they make recommendations for, and I wanted to highlight a few of them that we've been working on, and one of them being documenting our information flows. As we, especially with our new project upgrade that we're doing with Maximo going into our Mass Nine, we really need to understand how that system talks to all of the different systems that we have, as well as external vendors. And that's where the documentation of the information flows, so that we know where it's going, how it's coming in, and moving that, because we're actually taking that system from an on-prem system to a cloud-based system. So it becomes even more important to know how we're going to be allowing the systems to communicate on that end. Again, with the device vulnerabilities, our patching policy, N minus one basically is, N is your most recent version. So if you think of Windows operating system, your Windows desktop is Windows eleven. The N minus one would be Windows ten. So we always try to make sure that we are within one version of the most current version. That helps minimize our risk. That is the second most popular way of compromising systems is by unpatched systems. So that's why we implemented this policy, to make sure that we do it, and it goes across our entire framework, whether it's software, whether it's hardware, networking, firewalls, and end-user computing. Maintaining and monitoring logs, this is part of the detection of the framework, where we have to know what is going on within the system, so that if an event were to happen, we would be able to go back into the logs and try and find where it happened, so that we could properly isolate it. And I think Jenny had mentioned it earlier, the testing of our annual disaster, incident response plan. We do what we call tabletop exercises every year, and that takes our information security team along with other members of the IT department, and we put them in scenarios of potential compromise. And they have to use the tools that we have on our systems to try and detect that compromise, and then assess it, respond to it, and mitigate it in a timely fashion. So that goes to Jenny's comment earlier, where it says, if we don't have that in place, if we're not testing it, then we don't know how we're going to be able to respond should an event happen. I always keep, I like to keep the segmentation of the OT, and that came in handy, especially with Jenny's presentation. Protecting our OT environment is critical. We did implement a technology a little while back, which effectively does what we call microsegmentation. It isolates it from our IT environment, so that our IT environment cannot see it, and our OT environment cannot see the IT environment, so that should anything happen to one system or the other, it will not impact the other side. Managing our access to our assets, along with the detection and response in cybersecurity, you have to know what you're protecting. So we've implemented some tools that give us additional visibility into our endpoints, as far as what kind of, what systems we have on our network, where they're at, how the information flows to and from there, so that if we identify an endpoint at a certain location that is compromised, we can effectively isolate that without impacting the rest of the business traffic. And then finally, the backups, backups is always critical when it comes to that. We have, over the last fiscal year, increased our data retention, our backup retention, I should say, to one hundred and eighty days, which is, probably needs to be looked at and assessed again, because it continues to go on. Studies have found that some of the bad actors will sit on your network and map your network out for over a hundred, you know, up to a hundred and eighty days before they do any actions. So that's why they make a recommendation that you back up your systems and keep the retention for that long of a period of time, because you will be able to recover, and that's probably the most effective way of not having to deal with ransomware or anything else like that. Any questions on this slide? Next one. So I wanted to kind of give you an overview of what our phishing looks like and what some of our security awareness training is, because I told you earlier, the number two compromised system is unpatched systems. Well, number one is end-user computing. It's the person that sits between the chair and the keyboard. It's the person that sits between the chair and the keyboard. So we have to do any regular training, and we do it monthly now, to where we fish our users to see how they do and respond to emails. We are also implementing some additional training features with our security team so that they'll be able to go out to the different locations and provide additional training to everybody in their environment. Last year, you'll see, you know, total reported was 718, and the numbers, you know, show the numbers of clicks, the replies, the attachments. Each one of those categories could be a potential compromise. So we always want to drive those numbers down. And you can see in 2025, the number, you know, we've done pretty good. It's fairly consistent. I think in 2024, our average fish rate was 9.7. We're at 8.7 now. Industry average is 5.6, so we've got some work to do. And we continue, you know, that's part of how we modify our program to try and increase awareness and make sure that they're, that our users are informed and helping us try and fight this off. Any questions?
I'm just, yeah, I'm looking at these numbers, and given that we're only, I don't know what month, so this is basically maybe three months of the year. We seem ahead of pace compared to 2024, that maybe things are not going in the right direction?
That's a good catch. We actually had, part of that is because we've increased the frequency in what we're doing in our phishing attempts. The other part of it is we've increased the complexity of the emails that are going out. And Jenny had mentioned this earlier, AI is coming into play. Well, the tool that we use to fish people uses AI, and it learns, and it makes it harder for individuals to, to pass their tests, so to speak. So that, that's kind of why we see the trending up on that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, this is a, it does, and I appreciate that we're making it, we're upping our game because fishers are, if I can call them that, spammers are upping their game. But, you know, the, being that well above the industry average is very concerning to me, especially given that this is a major infrastructure organization. So sort of curious what, what things we're doing to really push that number down.
So part of that was the increase in the, you know, going to the monthly security where, you know, phishing campaigns. The other part of it is we're going to start working with the different departments and getting, getting our people out there and helping them to understand what's going on. We, if an individual fails a phishing attempt, for example, on this, they are required to take some training to help them to understand why they failed that. And as they do that, then we will fish them again. If they fail a second time, then they get put into a different category, and we increase the, the training for them so that we can make sure that they understand what to look for, how to, you know, potentially resolve that.
Are there discipline measures that are, are put into place on some kind of schedule? Like at a certain point, you may, you know, that there's, there's some consequence other than just taking more training for repeat offenders?
We have discussed, yeah, bringing those repeat offenders to the visibility at the director level so that action can be taken there. So, so we can, I guess, enforce or emphasize the importance of not falling for the phishing attacks. Our plan is-
Yeah, I guess, I think at some point, we have to consider some level of, and I don't know how, how effective those remediation efforts are. I know from my own work organization, I understand that an awful lot of the people doing this are repeat offenders. And so at some point, you know, I wonder if a, taking away their security credentials altogether to sign into any, you know, MSD computer would, should be considered, and I don't know if that's been discussed. And that may have employment implications, and so be it. But this is just, you know, this is really dangerous. And, you know, I, I hope we're, we have some pretty low tolerance. You know, especially if people have gone through successive rounds of training and retraining.
Yeah, I think that feedback is point on, and I intend to raise that with, with Brett and the directors at that level.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anyone from, any thought with working with the human resources folks making these job performance issues? I'm sorry.
I'll get it. And to answer your question, there are civil service rules that allow us to go down that path. We haven't had-
I mean, we're thinking of that as an option.
Yes, yes, we are as an option. We would need to follow our existing framework, either the civil service rules or whatever agreements we have.
The only thing you can do is if it's a job performance issue, then they're not performing.
Correct.
We need a path for any other job, but what would you do with any other poor performer?
Right. Any other performance issue, we would follow the same guidelines.
Any additional questions? I will, I will make one final note on that. The one thing that we have seen, and we don't have hard numbers on this yet, but we, I want to start tracking that, is we see that people fail most often when they're on their phones looking at email as opposed to their computers. And part of that, you know, is because of the size and the, what they're looking at, and they, but the other part of it, I believe, is because of the, the quality of the phishing attempts are getting better.
All right, thank you, Jason and Jenny. Now we have a discussion by Todd Oshbacher regarding ordinances for the district's general liability and risk insurance plans.
Good morning, trustees. I am here this morning to provide you with information about the district's annual insurance renewals. At the May board meeting, you will be asked to authorize staff to proceed to bind insurance for the district under various property and liability insurance policies to be effective for the one-year period beginning July 1st, 2025. Insurance is handled by the legal department, primarily by Kevin Markwitz, an attorney on my staff, as well as by Dan Greco from Thomas McGee Group. Thomas McGee Group is the district's insurance broker. They have worked to obtain the quotes for the coverage I will describe this morning. We are just finishing the first year of the legal department handling the insurance program. I think it's gone pretty well. Kevin and Dan are largely responsible for that. With that intro, I will now briefly summarize each of the policies. Please bear with me. There's a total of 19. Each policy is a separate contract with usually a different carrier, different terms. So it's required that we provide you with information and a separate detailed sheet and ordinance for each of the policies. Now, we have created a chart here that was provided with the materials from Wendy. I think it's at the very end. There's also a copy at each of your places if you'd like to follow along. Sorry, I know the font is small. We certainly can't read it on the screen, but we wanted to condense everything, get it all in front of you in one place. So to begin, first, we have a property insurance policy through FM Global. This protects against perils such as fire, flood, and earthquake loss for all real property owned by the district, including our seven wastewater treatment plants and our three maintenance yards. This policy would pay for physical damage and loss to the buildings and contents owned by MSD. The coverage is for $1 billion per occurrence with a $500,000 deductible. Next on the schedule is a combined liability policy through the MOPRM, which is the Missouri Public Entity Risk Management, an insurance pool of municipal entities like us. The liability policy has three separate components or coverages. Each of these has a $2 million per occurrence limit, $100,000 deductible, and first dollar defense costs. They pay for attorneys from day one. Those three coverages are general liability, management and employee benefit plan, administration liability, and employment practices liability for discrimination claims, harassment, that sort of thing. Next, we have automobile liability coverage through travelers. The limit here is 2 million per accident and covers damage to autos as well as liability for physical injury and death from third parties when injured by MSD employees driving vehicles. Following auto, there's a grouping of what's called public official excess or umbrella liability. There are three additional layers of excess coverage here. The initial is through Ace Chubb, provides 2 million. This is on top of the 2 million in MOPRM. And we have three layers on top of that. First is through Princeton excess, 5 million. Second is with Gemini, another 5 million in protection. And third and final layer is through Home Site Insurance Company, and again, 5 million. So we have 2, 2, 555 on liability and excess. Next is importantly, after hearing Jason and Jenny's presentation, is our cyber liability coverage. This includes protection from breaches of our employee and customer information. The cyber coverage is through travelers and provides us with $5 million in coverage against losses. Next, we have our owner's pollution protective insurance through AIG Specialty. This coverage protects us for 3 million in losses due to a pollution condition caused by one of our consultants or contractors in our smaller contracts, contracts up to 100,000. We made the decision a number of years ago that it is more cost-effective for us to procure this ourselves rather than to require it of our smaller contractors, and that has proved to be a good decision. Now, for projects over 100,000, the contractor or consultant is required to provide the pollution liability coverage. Next, we've got contractors' equipment. This covers equipment for MSD projects when not located on MSD-owned property. Coverage is for the value of the equipment up to a maximum of 4.3 million. Now we have, next we have commercial crime protection, financial loss due to dishonest acts of our employees, and that is 10 million in coverage. Next, fiduciary liability with federal insurance, protecting MSD from financial loss due to the mishandling of our employee benefit plans. There's 10 million in coverage there. We have a second layer on top of that with travelers for another 10 million. Next is our excess workers' comp employers' liability policy. This is through Midwest Employers Casualty. This coverage is typical workers' comp coverage, pays for expenses associated with workers' comp under statutorily required limits for injured employees. In addition, this policy provides 2 million in what's called employer liability coverage that protects us for claims made associated, like with a workers' comp claim, like loss of consortium by an employee's spouse, that sort of thing. Next is the Missouri Underground Storage Tank Insurance Policy, covering property damage and cleanup caused by leaking storage tanks that release petroleum or chemicals. We have storage tanks for gasoline, for chemicals we use in our operations. If they leak or cause damage, this would protect us. It covers the compensatory damages for physical injuries as well as property damage from a leak. Next, we have our National Flood Insurance Program coverage, provides coverage for loss and damage to our building and their contents from a flooding event. Maximum limits are 500,000 each per building and contents. Finally, our major facility pollution liability policy. This is through Ironshore Specialty, protects MSD from liability claims due to pollution emanating from our seven wastewater treatment plants. Coverage here is 10 million per occurrence. That concludes the info on the individual policies, but before closing, I wanted to add a point about the cost of our insurance. You'll see at the bottom of the chart, the overall total cost of our program for FY26 is $7.68 million. This cost increased by $657,000 from FY25, representing a 9.3% increase. Now, for historical purposes, between '24 and '25, the increase was 8.25%. Our increase this year is slightly larger than last. And whilst that's a significant increase, we think increases have been kept as low as possible, given everything going on with insurance rates. For example, auto coverage increases year over year up by up to 25% on the high end. MSD is indeed on the higher side due to our larger class of vehicles, as well as the fact that our vehicle count increased from last year. Liability insurance has also seen really large increases, rates going up 10%, 20% regularly. Excess liability insurance have estimated increases of up to 35% even. Our liability and excess are increasing 13%, 14%. We're holding those to the extent possible. One more thing, our property insurance with FM Global is the most expensive of our policies, as you might expect. That one, while the premium is indeed high, I think it's 3.4 million, we do get a credit against that that comes in through the year. It's 160,000. We're pretty sure we will get that. We may get more, so that will effectively reduce the premium, not a huge amount, but some. That concludes the insurance presentation. Do any of you have any questions that I can answer? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Todd. Now I need a motion to go into closed session to discuss personal actions under section
Show move.
Show moved. Second.
I'll initiate the roll call. Trustee Kister.
Aye.
Trustee Watson.
Yes.
Trustee Wabi.
Yes, here.
Trustee Evans.
Yes.
Nick Isison.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Yes.
With that being said, we need to gather information.
Motion to come out of closed session?
So move.
Second?
Okay, we're out of closed session. Next tentative meeting date is Tuesday, June 3, 2025. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
Everyone have a good rest of the day.
You as well.
Thank you everybody.